I want to welcome you all to the Tuesday, March twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-four meeting of the Denton County Commissioners Court. At this time, I would like to welcome up our Denton County Tax Assessor Collector, Mrs. Michelle French. She's going to lead us in our invocations, and then I'd like to, then we'll welcome up Judge Forrest Beadle, who leads our pledges. And as I, we start this meeting today, I just want to extend our condolences to the people of Baltimore from Denton County with a tragic bridge collapse that happened today, and want to let them know that Denton County has the people of Baltimore and our thoughts and prayers. So if you will please stand, I want to remind everybody, please turn off your cell phones.
Good morning. If you all will pray with me. Heavenly Father, we come to you, and we just thank you so much for this day. We thank you for your blessings. We thank you for your mercies. Father, I pray that you'll be with each and every person that is represented in this room, both their, both them, as well as all of their families. I pray for blessings over their lives and that you will lead them and guide them. Father, I pray for the, that you'll give wisdom and discernment and knowledge to the commissioners and to the, to the judge in all of the deliberations and the considerations that they will be making today. And Father, we also come to you and pray for those who have been involved in this Baltimore bridge collapse. Father, we pray for your, just your, your mercy, and we pray that you will just be with each and every person that is impacted by this. And we just pray that, that you will bring your peace upon them and that you will, will give them the peace that passes on understanding. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Good morning, everyone. If you'll please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Also, please join me in the pledge to the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Michelle, I always enjoy your prayers. I hope after you retire, you'll come back and visit us again routinely. Is that okay? Can we make a deal? I put it on the spot in public. Okay, I'm going to count on it. Thank you. All right, we've, you do not wish to speak. Okay. I have one registered speaker today for our item number one, which is for public input for items not listed on the agenda. And at this time, I'd like to welcome up Mr. Willie Hudson. While Mr. Hudson makes his way forward, I'd like to remind everybody that our, our public comments are limited to three minutes, and I'll be happy to set a timer. Good morning, sir.
Hearing aids aren't working this morning, so I can't hear very well. I'll make do. I'll try to read your lips. I hope you're not saying anything that's inappropriate, because I'll read that too. Just kidding. My name is, good morning, Judge.
Good morning.
My name is Willie Hudson. I live at six twenty-three Newton. Comments I want to make that are not on the agenda have to do with what I've been trying to say the last three weeks, last three times that I've been up here, and that is, as a military person, we learn to, oh, to do what we're told. We, we, we follow orders, and I thought that would carry some weight with you as I brought, that's why I brought it up, to let you know that I am a rule make, maker, follower. Whatever the rules say, I tend to follow those. But what I was trying to communicate to you is that when I, when I came back from Vietnam, that second tour, uh, they, again, the young man over here reminds me much of what I was like, that, that, just proud and, and willing to serve and to do what I'm supposed to do. But I was really young. I was seventeen, and just silly as I could be, and, but I still followed the rules and did what I was supposed to do. So I shared that with you to try to get some leeway, I hoped, to get a little bit of leniency from this court in, 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 in two ways, to understand that my feelings for the people who are buried there and that those, it's sacred grounds where they are, and, and they should be honored. And that's not, that's not happening, as far as I can tell. And I wanted to tell you how I felt when I came home on leave. And as I said, it was a neat thing that they did, the, the military giving us a free trip, flight from where we were stationed, I was stationed, to, to, to Fort Worth, a free, free flight. But we did some.
I'm sorry, your time is up, sir. Go ahead and finish your thought. Go ahead and finish your thought.
Okay, thank you. We, uh, we did some things that weren't honorable over there. And I say "we" because I'm part of the, I was part of the military. And since we're in a free country, the press could print things and, and that, that were, according to them, true. And so they printed some of the things that were, were going on over there and how the kids were being manipulated and abused. And so the people who were protesting the war and now added this to their protest, what we were doing, came up with a way where they could show us that they weren't happy with the way we were behaving. And I said, I thought wearing the uniform showed that I was an honorable person and I, that I served my country well.
Correct.
I thought that was good till I got off the plane. And they did something that I will never forget, when I walked and I had that uniform on, and I walked down the corridor, got off of Branniff, walked down that corridor at Love Field, in that uniform that I was proud to wear because I, I just, I was proud of the country. But they turned their backs on me, on us, as we walked down the, 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 from the airline to go pick up our bags, all of us people who had on military uniforms, they turned their backs on us. That hurt me so bad.
Mr. Hudson, can we pick this up in our, you've registered to speak on our other items. Can we pick that up then?
Okay, yes.
I want to be, I want to be consistent with our time allocation for everyone today, and I, I, I do appreciate your service to the country, but I want to be consistent with our court operating guidelines. All right. We have several of the people have registered, but they've registered to speak on item thirteen E. We do have one more public comment registrant for Stephen Dillenberg. Good morning, sir. I'll remind you, our time is limited to three minutes.
You're good. Last time you asked me, what do you want us to do? And I said I would email you guys, and for the record, I did not. The reason being that I've asked you guys before, if somebody says the cure for cancer is being hidden from cancer patients, it's expected that you guys would investigate it. No investigation that I can tell at all has been done, has kind of pitiful, as far as I can say. So what shall we do? Be sorry if mistakes were made. When a man is honestly mistaken, when a man who is honestly mistaken learns the truth, he either corrects the mistake or ceases being honest. It's kind of where we're at. We, we rely on you guys. Y'all direct a million people's health care. Matt Richardson chased me out of the meeting on the other side and blamed my mother for having a stroke five days after taking what you guys all but mandated her to take. My brother's wife is not here anymore. My best friend is not here anymore. His father is not here anymore. And these are all things that y'all could be doing some stuff to address, but first and foremost, put an item on the agenda. That's it. And that's all I've asked you guys for, and Willie can't get that, I can't get that. And for that reason, I'm running for mayor for the city of Denton. And I think I'm going to convince the kids at U N T, at least twenty-five percent of them, which is all I'll need, because the most that have voted in either of the past two elections for mayor are twelve thousand people, forty-eight thousand at U N T. If I can't convince a quarter of them that we should investigate the cure for cancer being hidden from people, then we're not really shit as a country, and we don't deserve anything anyway, so I'm going to leave it at that.
Perfect. Thank you, sir. All right. Thank you all for coming today. Let's go to item thirteen B. Thirteen B is the approval of a request to submit a grant application to the Department of Health and Human Services, Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, SAMSA, for the amount of one million, eight hundred and five thousand, three hundred and eighty-one dollars for over five years of funding, this fiscal year twenty-four through twenty-twenty-nine, and any appropriate action. And we do have Judge Forrest Beadle with us this morning. I wanted to go ahead and handle his items so we could get back to the courtroom. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Judge Azin, Commissioner. We are back for a request approval from the commissioners to grant us leave to apply for this grant. This is our second SAMSA grant. I would like to take a moment very quickly and thank Ms. Tammy Russell, who's my program manager, and along with this Raina Maloney, who is here somewhere, who did quite a bit of work to get this grant ready to go, to be applied, applied for by the Denton County Veterans Treatment Court Program in this county. The, the figures are correct. It is one point eight million dollars and change. It is a five-year funding grant, and primarily what the money goes to is to fund services for the veterans that come into the program. One of the major changes we made with this grant from the previous grant is, the last grant, while it did concentrate on substance abuse, based off our experiences over the last five and a half years, and actually going all the way back to the inception of this program in two thousand and twelve, is we've added considerably to substance abuse and monitoring. In addition to that, of course, there is some requested counseling for PTSD and other military-related trauma that goes along with that. But nevertheless, the majority of the new funding goes directly to affect services that help substance abuse, which has been my focus since I've taken the bench with this program as in phase one. For lack of a better term, we try to sober them up as quickly as we can. We work on mental health in phase two, when they're sober and prepared to deal with those issues they need to deal with. Unless our assessments and our assessment tools require that we kind of reverse that, and we start with mental health first. And it all depends individually on the veteran and what their trauma is. I do want to give one word of warning concerning this grant. The last time that Denton County applied for this grant, President Trump was in office, and we were unfortunately going through the opioid crisis. And President Trump dumped over a billion dollars on SAMSA and other services at the federal level to help fight that conflict. So there was a lot more money back in two thousand and eighteen when we applied for this grant. This time, I think the pool of money that's available for these types of treatment courts is close to twenty-eight million. They are looking to fund sixty-one programs across the country. So that's one reason why I wanted to bring up Ms. Russell's efforts and Ms. Maloney's efforts in this, along with Paul Bastian and his team, especially Spencer Kimball over at the Veteran's Service Office, because I think we've written the best grant we can. It has scored well in the past. I think it'll score well again this time. But nevertheless, I do want to warn the commissioners, we're not dealing with as much money from the feds this time. So we're very hopeful that we'll get funded in part, very hopeful also that hopefully we'll get the full amount. I do want to address one position we are funding. The commissioners are very familiar with it. That's our mental health care coordinator. Right now, that position is unoccupied, because unfortunately Lieutenant Gilmore, Jeff Gilmore, who's our normal program manager for this, he's still on the border with Operation Lone Star and has been down there for some time. He will come back to us at some point, but right now, Ms. Russell, yet again, she has stepped up, and she's fulfilling the role for the second time as program manager. My thoughts are, when Lieutenant Colonel Gilmore returns, Judge Tammy will go back to her original position. The reason why I bring that up is, the grant will fund her position salary only. As you can see from the, the numbers, it is adjusted over the life of the grant for fringe increases in salary only. Of course, she is a retired supervision officer with the Supervision Department for thirty years. So insurance and other benefits that the county normally would have to pay for that position, you should not be concerned with. And again, we're hoping the salary will fund that, not at a part-time rate like it did last time, but at a full-time rate. And again, that's been our experience with the first SAMSA grant, and especially with the veterans we've had in the program. It is very nice to have a full-time case manager or mental health coordinator to help with some of the harder, need cases. And that is her role right now. She's fulfilling, along with the program manager position as well, too. But I would certainly encourage any questions here. Again, the main focus and the main changes in the program are dealing with some tried and true, but also best practices when it comes to substance abuse. That's supportive outpatient, that's intensive outpatient. We've also requested some money for, additional money for monitoring, specifically your analysis. I think our program across the state, I hate to say it, we, we make them provide more year analysis than anything else, so that's a huge expense, but it does help and make sure that we trust but verify that they are being sober. And of course, over time, that helps out immensely, especially when they get into their trauma counseling.
I think you've done a great job, Judge, of outlining the program and the grant. Commissioner Edmondson.
I'll try, there we go. Thank you.
There you go.
Judge, I appreciate what you said about the funding not being there right now. If indeed there were to be a change in administration, how long would it be before we might look to larger funding? After the first of the year, mid-year? What do you think?
Oh, that's, of course, completely up to Congress and, of course, whoever's in the White House at the time. For this particular funding opportunity, the way SAMSA does this, and again, I'm kind of, unfortunately, kind of getting to be an expert on federal grants. I say that with a smile, because they are very troublesome to deal with, although I'm beginning to understand SAMSA a lot more. This funding opportunity was announced, I believe, at the end of February, and will apply for this next five years. But every year, there are certain funding opportunities that come up. I'm very hopeful we'll get partially funded, Commissioner, but at the same time, if, if that does not work out this time, we'll try again next year. In addition to that, I will warn you, I will be back here in a couple of weeks, because the Department of Justice has also released some funding for supervision. And so keeping with the motto, don't keep all your eggs in one basket, we're going to come back and talk to you again about also requesting a DOJ grant as well, too.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Members, are there any other questions or comments for Judge Beadle? We have a motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Judge, for all your efforts, and thank you, Raina.
Well, once again, putting on different hats, on behalf of the Legion and all the other veterans organizations out there, I would like to thank you very much for your continued support of Denton County veterans. And of course, that also goes for the participants there in the court program. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Good. Thank you, sir. All right, members, we'll go to, let's go to item three A. Three A is approval of a resolution recognizing Paula Pascal's retirement and any appropriate action. And Paula, if you'll come up to the microphone here, I know you've got Sam with you. Good morning. I've known Paula a million years, and I, a million, and I hate to, to see, I'm happy for you. I hate to see this day. So Paula, we'll read this proclamation to the court, have some comments, then we'll be happy to allow you to have the last word. Okay? Does that sound good?
Just one word?
Words.
Sorry.
So, uh, this is a resolution honoring Paula Pascal for thirteen years of service to Denton County. And the Denton County Commissioners Court, Denton County, Texas, during a regular session on the twenty-sixth day of March, two thousand and twenty-four, considered the following resolution, whereas Paula Pascal, Elections Training Coordinator, has been a loyal employee with the Denton County Elections Administration since January the twelfth, two thousand and eleven, and will retire on March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four, after thirteen years of service. And whereas Paula began her career in public service in nineteen seventy-one with the City of Mesquite Library at the ripe old age of fourteen, and later transferred to the City of Mesquite Tax Office. Whereas Paula took her tax office knowledge to the City of Richardson, which eventually led her to the position of City Secretary, where she served until nineteen ninety-one. And whereas Paula also served as City Secretary for the City of Highland Village from nineteen ninety-one to nineteen ninety-five, and for the town of Flower Mound from nineteen ninety-five to two thousand and ten. And whereas Paula thought she was retiring in two thousand and ten, when at her retirement party from the town of Flower Mound, Frank Phillips asked her, do you really want to retire? And her answer to that question began her thirteen years of service to the Denton County Elections Administration, first as contract manager, and for the last several years as training coordinator. And whereas Paula, with a true servant's heart, has served the citizens of Texas for fifty-three years. And now, therefore, be it resolved, the Denton County Commissioners Court, Denton County, Texas, does hereby extend to Paula Pascal our sincere and grateful appreciation for her dedicated service to Denton County. We congratulate Paula on her well-earned retirement and extend our best wishes to her for continued success, happiness, and good health in the years to come. Done in open court, this is the twenty-sixth day of March, two thousand and twenty-four, upon a motion by the chair, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Well, I, we will take the vote here in just a second. Second by Commissioner Mitchell. Well, I, we'll take the vote here in just a second. Well, Paula, I just want to say it's been such a privilege to get to know you and to call you a friend all these years. I know you back from your Highland Village and...
Can I just call you Andy?
Andy, absolutely. And your Flower Mound, and your Flower Mound days. And I was so excited when you came up here to Denton County. And it was great because Paula had a city experience, you know, and understood what it was like for the cities to operate their elections and how the county could partner with them as we administer those elections for the cities. And so I just want to thank you for all your years of service, as this proclamation said, to the people of Texas and to these different cities across Denton County and to the Denton County Government. So thank you. Thank you so much, Sam. It was good to see you. And anyway, we just really appreciate your service, members.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Paula, it was a joy to work with you when I was county chair because your training was so professional and so thorough. And I really appreciated that. It's going to be hard to find somebody who can do that as well as you have done. So, but enjoy your retirement. You and Sam will have a lot of fun traveling and doing other things. And you won't have to train him because he's already trained, right?
He's already trained.
There you go.
Thank you.
Bobby?
Paula, you've been with me all these years, since I've been in office from the city until now. I want to thank you for your service to, not only to the cities, but also to Denton County. You have been a refreshing breath of fresh air everywhere you've been, from the Highland Village City Secretary, Flower Mound Town Secretary, and now in Denton County. We just want to thank you. I want to thank you, personally thank you for all that you've done. And Sam, you've been right by her side all these years. So I want to thank you, and I hate to leave, see you leave, but I understand sometimes it's, we have to go. So, oh, we want to go. You don't have to go. We want to go. Yes. So I thank you for your service. Thank you for your friendship. And please know that Denton County is your home, as is the cities that you served. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Go and enjoy.
Thank you.
Members, any other, go ahead.
Thank you so much for what you've done. What an impressive resume. And it's, we thank you for what you've done to, in the county as well as the rest of the community.
Thank you very much.
Enjoy retirement.
Yes.
Pardon me?
I said, enjoy retirement.
Oh, I don't know how to do it yet.
They take it real easy. Most people do pretty good with it. All right. I would like to have Frank Phillips come, our Denton County Elections Administrator. He's going to come up and say a few words before you get to speak, Paula. In the mic, Frank.
She's moving to Van Zandt County.
Really?
You think she's really retired, you know? Who wants to start a pool on when she goes to work for Van Zandt County? Fifty-three years. It's just amazing.
It is, isn't it?
It's mind-boggling to me. But, you know, if you vote in Denton County, Paula has trained those poll workers.
That's right.
And we're only as successful as our employees. So, thank you for the success.
Oh, thank you. All right, Paula, it's all yours.
Oh, Lord. Okay, do you want my three hundred and sixty-three slide PowerPoint? Or the Reader's Digest?
Hey, it's your time.
No, I'm not going to take up your time. I just want to say thank you to all of y'all for the resolution. Thank you to my husband, Sam, who still asks after, during every election, "What time are you going to be home?"
I don't know.
No. Thank you to Frank and Judith and Brandy and Mickey over there and Cindy that came here, and to all the people that I've met in the county that are always great, all these people at this table, my family. Okay, I told you I'd keep it short.
It's okay. Keep going.
It's just a big thank you. I have done nothing but government my whole entire, since I was fourteen.
Yeah.
Years old. And I know it. I love it. And yes, I've already talked to Van Zandt County about working elections. Sent them my training PowerPoint and everything else, too. But I've enjoyed my time here. I learned a lot more than I ever dreamed I would.
Yeah.
And I just thank everyone for the opportunity to be here.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Paula. All right. Well, very well said, of course. Well, we have a, I want to thank you. The thank you is all ours, really. Thank you for investing your time here. Thank you for investing your time and career here. All right, we have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
It's done. We'll have to get my... Stay here.
Just want to click.
Next is item three C, which is approval of a resolution recognizing Noe Rodriguez's retirement. Noe, if you'll make your way forward, if you want to bring your sweet wife, okay. All right. Hey, Noe, this is a big loss for us today, these folks coming through. Yes, absolutely. Well, this is a resolution honoring Noe Rodriguez for eight years of dedicated service to Denton County and Denton County Commissioners Court, Denton County, Texas, during a regular session on the twenty-sixth day of March two thousand and twenty-four, considered the following resolution. Whereas Noe Rodriguez has been a loyal employee with the Denton County Department of Transportation and Engineering since March the thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen, and will retire on April the first, two thousand and twenty-four, after eight years of service. Whereas Noe Rodriguez was hired as a lead road construction inspector, later promoted to senior road construction inspector, and finally promoted to administrative foreman, where he ended his career. Whereas Noe was a dedicated employee who provided a high level of quality and valuable service to the Department of Transportation and Engineering and has earned the respect of all who worked with him. Whereas Noe was a team member whose work ethic was always a positive force. Noe's devotion to leading the road crew and administrative staff was superior, greatly appreciated and respected by his fellow colleagues in the Department of Transportation and Engineering, and he will be deeply missed. And Noe, having worked on the road projects most of his career, looks forward to traveling the roads with his wife and grandkids, seeking out his next big adventure. Whereas the Department of Transportation and Engineering would like to thank Noe for his commitment and hard work throughout his career, and we wish him well in his retirement. And now, therefore, be it resolved, the Denton County Commissioners Court, Denton County, Texas, does hereby extend to Noe Rodriguez our sincere and grateful appreciation for his dedicated service to Denton County. We congratulate Noe on his well-earned retirement and extend our best wishes to him for continued success, happiness, and good health in the years to come. Done in open court, this the twenty-sixth day of March two thousand and twenty-four, upon a motion by the chair, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Well, Noe, I want to say I've known you much longer than this resolution outlined through your work with, over at TechDOT. How many years were you a TechDOT employee?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight years at TechDOT. And how long were you at JGO?
Two.
He was two years at JGO, and that's when we stole him from JGO. We did, did we not? We stole, he was, he was, he was, he was, I knew him through TechDOT and then, and then at JGO, we were doing a road together with JGO and so impressed with Noe. And I said, we've got to add him to our team. Holly and I were talking about that this morning in the office. It's a sad day. And I was glad that you, you had a long and noble career at TechDOT. And when I called his reference at TechDOT, I said, hey, I'm thinking about hiring Noe. I've just been so impressed with him. And what do you think? And this individual said, "The best hire I ever did, the TechDOT individual. I want to pass that on to you." And that's a pretty good reference right there. And so I do want to thank you for making the roadways here in Denton County safer through your investment in your career here. Safety was always your top priority. And I just want to thank you for your years of service to TechDOT and to Denton County. And so I just want to say thank you so much. It's been, it's been a pleasure getting to work with you, Noe.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the court? Commissioner Edmondson?
Noe, when I became commissioner, I knew next to nothing about building roads. And I remember going out with you and some of the road crew in the first week that I was in office. And you were so kind and you explained in very elementary language so that I would understand what alligatoring was and various things like that. You were always so pleasant and fun to deal with and so very, very capable. We're going to miss you. Thank you so much for your service all these years, and I hope you have a wonderful retirement.
Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Mitchell?
Thank you, Noe. You came to Denton County with the wealth of knowledge and experience, and you just came and jumped right in. And I just want to thank you for your service and all that you've done to help us build these roads in Denton County and all over Texas, TechDOT's area. Thank you for being a great employee. We did, we made a great hire also. So I want to thank you for your service and thank your family. Your wife rode up with us in the elevator and appreciate you. And go and enjoy yourself for the rest of your life.
Absolutely. Okay. You get the last word, but I'm going to let Tina come up and say hi real quick.
Real quick, Judge. I'm sorry.
No, 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 my bad. I didn't look over. Commissioner Williams?
Sir, for the short period of time, I've, I've been responsible precinct one. You've, you've been there every time I had a question. Very informative, very knowledgeable, obviously, always good in front of the customer, which is the, the public. And I really appreciate the relationship that we were able to build. And I could always expect and know that if I called you, you'd answer. You'd, if you didn't know the answer exactly right then, you'd get back with it. And I really appreciate that. And it made my job, it made the precinct that I'm responsible for, made us look better. So thank you so much. You're going to be greatly missed.
Thank you.
So I do wish you the best of luck and enjoy your retirement.
All right. We're going to hear from Tina and Jody, and then Noe.
Well, Noe, I want to first thank you.
Speak into the mic, Tina. It's a, right there. There we go. We want to pick it up.
Have to get it down here, sure.
There we go. There we go.
Noe, first, I want to thank you for being such a little friend for these thirty-plus years.
Thirty-plus years?
Yeah, we don't want to...
They were at TechDOT together a million years ago.
Yeah, yeah. It's been long, but...
We grew up together.
You took, when you, when you came over to the Transportation and Engineering, you took two departments that were used to working separately, and you were able to make everybody come together and work as a team. And that's phenomenal. And I think now we work as a, you know, it doesn't matter where it is in the county, we're one department.
That's right.
And that's, that's excellent. I know you've done a lot of excellent work. We put a lot of miles down the road. We still got, you know, quite a few to go, but you started that and you started the vision. So I want to, I want to thank you for all the stuff. And then also, you know, prioritizing training.
Right.
You know, training and safety for all of our, our people. So...
Thank you so much.
Like I said, I'm going to miss you and I look forward to seeing your adventures on mine.
I'll send them to you.
So, and I hope you and Walsie have a wonderful time, you know, finding new trails and, and all that. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, Jody Gonzalez.
Well, you know, one of the things that, when, when we consolidated Hoden Bridge, I made a recommendation to you guys that we promote Noe from inspector to administrative foreman. And you guys were so excited about doing that. And I appreciate that because he's given me an education in, in the road business that I did not have. And Noe and I spent a lot of time together up in the courthouse, third floor of the courthouse on the square. You know, most of the times he said, "You want me to do what?" But we worked through it. You know, we've had a lot of agree, we had more agreements than we had disagreements. But I want to tell you that Noe is a superb person and respected by his colleagues. And I think the big word that, that describes Noe, he is truly a collaborator of, of people. You know, he put a lot of folks together and made, made that consolidation happen. And that, that's not on me. That's really on, on Noe for being at the roots on the ground, making things happen like that. And, and really putting teams together that hadn't worked together in a long time. And he, he put these, these folks together and really collaborated a, a single mission, single objective and, and goals and objectives for the Department of Transportation and Engineering. For that, Noe, I really want to thank you. And you should be proud of that, 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 that time you had there.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you and enjoy your retirement.
All right, Noe, you get the last word, my friend.
All right. I just want to say I couldn't have done enough, any of it without my wife.
That's right.
Yep. I started every morning trying to give more than I received, and I'll continue to do that. Get up. My goal is to give more than I receive and continue on. Thank y'all.
What a great motto. What a great motto. All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Noe.
Thank you.
All right, we have one more retirement resolution. Let's go to item three B, which is a approval of a resolution recognizing Patricia Harwell's retirement in any appropriate action. And Patricia's not with us in person today, but she is watching from home. So hi, Patricia. Glad to have you tuning in. So this is a resolution honoring Patricia Trish Harwell for over twenty-three years of service to Denton County. The Denton County Commissioners Court, Denton County, Texas, during a regular session on the twenty-sixth day of March two thousand and twenty-four, considered the following resolution. And whereas Trish Harwell, Assistant Department Supervisor in the Department in the Denton County Tax Assessor Collector Office, retired on March eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four, after twenty-three years of service to Denton County. Whereas Trish exhibited a positive attitude, dependability, and encouragement, and worked hard to consider the needs of her staff to provide a cohesive environment. And whereas Trish began as a deputy clerk one and through the years was promoted into assistant and supervisory roles, including assistant department supervisor, working in numerous office locations during her tenure, with a ready willingness to do whatever needed to be done to assist our customers and motor vehicle dealerships that visited the office. And whereas Trish worked in multiple facets of the tax office during her career, including customer service and support, processing, web dealer, and training. Trish served Denton, Trish served Denton County well with years of experience and knowledge, kindness, and helpfulness to both customers and staff. Whereas Trish will now be able to enjoy a much deserved rest and relaxation with family and friends. And whereas the staff and administrators of the Denton County Tax Assessor Collector's Office are grateful to Trish for her commitment to public service during her career, her tenure with Denton County, and her consistent desire to do the best for our citizens. And now, therefore, be it resolved, the Denton County Commissioners Court, Denton County, Texas, does hereby extend to Trish Harwell our sincere and grateful appreciation for her dedicated service to Denton County. We congratulate... We congratulate Trish on her well-earned retirement and extend our best wishes to her for continued success, happiness and good health in the years to come. Done in open court, this is the twenty-sixth day of March, twenty twenty-four, upon a motion made by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? Well, I, as Commissioner, as, uh, Mrs. French makes her way forward, I would just like to say, Trish, thank you for your years of service. That is a long and noble career, and the tax office has a lot going on and it, it never ends at the tax office. During your years of service with the county, it has changed dramatically with technology and other things. But the same necessities apply, which is that great customer service, and that's what you're known for. So thank you for your years of service to the county. So go ahead, Mrs. French.
Absolutely. Well, I just want to publicly thank Trish for, for working with us and hanging with us for so long. She just has such a, she's such a kind soul and just really always wanted to see the best in people and wanted to see the best in her staff. And she really wanted to do the best that she could to, to encourage. When, when I say that she, she encouraged her staff, she really was. She was an encouragement to everyone that was around her. And so we're just so excited for her that she is now able to, to go off and do other things and to have fun. And whatever it is that she's gonna find herself to, to do, I know that she'll do a great job. But we are just so grateful for her time of service with us and for the service that she gave to our customers. Um, she really did exemplify, exemplify the, the model of service with excellence. And we just really appreciate all of her time with us. So thank y'all.
Perfect. Thank you, ma'am. All right, members, are there any other comments?
Thank you, Trish. We appreciate your work.
Enjoy your retirement.
Yes, thank you. Enjoy your retirement. Absolutely, absolutely. All right, we have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries your name. So while we have the tax assessor here, I'm gonna go to thirteen C, approval of a waiver of penalty and interest on account number nine seven eight seven three six D E N and any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries your name. Next is thirteen D, approval of the penalty and interest on account number one zero zero five four four zero D E N and any appropriate action.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, I mean, Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries your name. Next, let's go to item thirteen E, a discussion of the St. John Cemetery located at Hub Clark Road, Pilot Point, Texas. And we'll start out with Commissioner Williams. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Judge. Uh, I think everybody obviously knows this has been a little bit of a discussion topic for quite a few months now uh, on the, uh, on the first, uh, part of Commissioners Court. So obviously, uh, with requests from a few citizens and, um, ourselves, we wanted to have a conversation about this, to put it to bed and, and obviously make sure that we're doing the best we can by the individuals that are buried here. By statute, on June fourteenth, two thousand sixteen, Commissioners Court approved to maintain the cemetery. At that time, it was determined that Denton County Historical Commission and the Office of Historical and Culture will organize volunteers, serve as liaison between the property owners and volunteers or the county resources used to preserve and clean up the cemetery. Reason that's important is because I think it outlines clearly how this works and who's responsible for what and how the owners, the landowners, would like this to, to go and go forward. I went, uh, I went out there, um, recently, went out there last week, actually, on the nineteenth. Let me just make sure that's right. Uh, just to, to observe myself and have some discussions. And, um, Ms. Peggy met me out there, uh, Dell and his team met us out there. And, um, just to take a look, and I wanted for myself to understand the concerns that we keep hearing. And so, uh, to my pleasure, it actually is, it, it's beautiful out there. It's a quiet environment. It'd be a wonderful place to be buried. And these folks are in a very serene environment. I mean, it's, it's unbelievably quiet. And, um, again, all I heard is it was, didn't look very pretty. It wasn't very clean. That is absolutely not the truth whatsoever. The tree structures are up higher. If you will, go to the next slide and I can kind of show you some pictures of what it used to look like. So the, the photo to the upper left is what it looked like before Denton County, um, took over the responsibility of cleaning it. And so the photo down below is from March fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, so not very long ago. And what you can see is the underbrush has been cleaned up. The trees have been thinned out a little bit as far as the, the, uh, growth. Dead trees have been removed. While I was out there was, there was very little debris on the floor whatsoever, on the ground. It's very obvious where the cemetery is. And I think the, 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 maybe where there was some confusion from both sides, if you will, is there are leaves on the ground. And, um, but the issue with the, the, the reason you don't disturb the leaves, there's a couple of reasons why. First off, if you go out there with a rake, these headstones are covered. Some of the headstones are, most of them have fallen down. And you're trying to preserve this. Uh, I mean, this, this cemetery is, is from the eighteen hundreds, late eighteen hundreds. Um, and I want to say, I don't have exactly this, and I'm sure Peggy can, can let, uh, let us know. But the last person that was buried there, I believe, was in the early nineteen hundreds. So this is not like this is a cemetery that is, is, you know, people are being buried, uh, daily out there. Or that this is a, um, private cemetery where they sell burial plaques, okay? None, none of us are going to be buried out there, if that makes sense. So nevertheless, um, it, it's been very well maintained. It is a beautiful area, um, very quiet. But I want to kind of talk a little bit more about the leaves because that's, that's what, uh, seems to be the concern. And, um, I just want to read a little bit right here. But so, so leaves. The reason you want to have a little bit of leaves on the ground is leaves also help to feed the trees and allow water to be absorbed and filtered slowly down through the layers of the soil into the tree roots. The process of slow biodegrading of nat, natural forest floor materials feeds the trees, which allows the forest to maintain a healthy, balanced ecosystem. You can find articles that will explain to you how important that is. The other thing, the other part of that is erosion, okay? So if we just knock all the leaves off, because there's no grass that grows here, especially obviously during the winter, but even right now you can see the grass outside versus the grass inside.
Because of all the shade.
Yeah, exactly. The trees. There's so many trees, it doesn't get much sunshine, which is, is wonderful. I mean, again, it is so peaceful out there. You hear birds. It's wonderful. But you don't want a bunch of, of, just, you don't want it where it's just, uh, just dirt. Because dirt will erode quickly and that, no telling what may happen, okay? Obviously, what we're wanting to do is preserve it as much as possible. So, uh, although I appreciate the efforts, we have to make sure we, we realize why we're doing things. The, the county does things for a reason. You know, we, I didn't make these decisions. We have people in place to research and that, that have the education and the experience that we all rely on up here to help us make good decisions. So the decisions that we make are not just on a whim or, or on the fly. You know, we do these things to make sure we're doing the best by whatever it may be, whether it's the citizens in under this case. It's the individuals that are, are buried here. So I just wanted to make sure that was very clear. You can go to the next slide, please. So the, the concern was is that, uh, the cemetery didn't, didn't, wasn't clean. So, um, there was a group that decided to go out there this last weekend, even though I'd asked them not to. And it wasn't me that was asking. I met with the citizens that own the properties, that are, that the three properties that surround this. Because there's, there's no private access. This is all owned, this is all private property. There's no, uh, I'm sorry, there's no public access to the cemetery. And that, that is, and we'll, I'll let our legal team discuss that in a second. But, okay, so went and did a cleanup, okay? And again, I was asking, please let us be involved. That's what was supposed to be. That's how we told the citizens, the, the, uh, private owners that we would, we would work this. It would go through the county, through Ms. Peggy's office, and we would put something together and we'd be more than happy to, to go out there and do that. And I put that in an email. But they decided not to listen to that. They went out there anyway. And so they may have cleaned up a little bit of the leaves, which again, I explained to her how important, but this is what was left behind. But what, why would you leave bags? There's a broken rake up there. Who are you leaving that behind to pick up? If you're gonna go clean something up, please do it correctly. I mean, you left, you, you, you left junk behind. You left bags of trash behind. So you know who had to go pick that up? The, the, the county had to go pick this up, not on a scheduled routine basis like we normally do, okay? So we're using taxpayer dollars, taxpayer mandated by people that could have been doing something else to go pick up the trash left behind these, these individuals that, again, I can appreciate what they're attempting to do. But if you would have coordinated with me the way I was trying to ask you, this wouldn't have looked like this. We would have made sure we had a, an effort together. But this is what it was like. So our, our guys had to go out and pick that up. Um, and again, I mean, if I was gonna do cleanup in a neighborhood, I wouldn't just leave that on your driveway. Because if I left that on your private property, that wouldn't be very nice, would it? So nevertheless, uh, again, I understand the attentions. This is, this is not what I would consider acceptable. Next one slide, please. This is important. This is a tell, the Texas Health and Safety Code. Okay, this explains what can and cannot be done under these, what control, which we have very little. I just want to make sure that's very clear as well. The county has really no control over who does and doesn't go out there. Except that we were asked to be the liaison from the owners of the property. So that, we do have that ability to be the liaison, okay? That's what's been asked. So you can read that on your own, but it's very clear. And I'll, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and turn this over a little bit to, um, well, Matt. If Matt wants to come up and speak about it, Matt is our, uh, legal counsel. And, um, he can kind of give a little bit more of an understanding of the surrounding three properties and the deeded records, um, and why it's landlocked, if you will. And then obviously the visiting of the cemetery, which, um, I think is important to understand the egress and ingress of, of access to this by the, by the property owners. So Matt, do you mind giving us a little bit of, uh, of also about the public road to the cemetery and the county taking, you know, away land? So we don't have the right to really just go in and say, okay, we, we're gonna take people's land so we can have, so the public can have access to the cemetery, which I understand that's what, what, um, the individuals would like. But unfortunately, there's laws in place to protect landowners. And I, I of all people am not here to tell you what to do with your land, and I'm darn sure not here to take your land. That's the last thing I think that we want government doing. So nevertheless, I'll turn this over to you. I appreciate your time.
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner, Judge, Commissioners. It's my privilege, uh, this morning. Uh, this, this is the controlling statute on access to the cemetery. So just to answer what may be some questions out there. The county does not own the St. John Cemetery. It's been a privately owned, uh, piece of property since the, since the late eighteen hundreds, since it was, you know, first deeded, uh, as property. And, uh, it has been, uh, always surrounded by, by private property. And, you know, you, if you look at a map, you can see where, where the public roads are in relation to this piece of property. And they're, they don't, they don't touch or, or really come very near to the property. So you do have to cross over, uh, to my knowledge, two, uh, different pieces of private property to get, uh, to this cemetery. And so once you have to cross private property to get to a privately held cemetery, uh, this, this section, uh, seven eleven oh four one of the Texas Health and Safety Code is the controlling law. So your, your ingress and egress is controlled, uh, by this statute. And you can see to answer another question, the county not owning the property also has no say in how that property is accessed. It's clearly articulated here that the right of access extends only to visitation during the hours determined by the owner or owners of the lands. Um, so it's gonna be your, your private landowners, uh, whose property is adjoining, uh, the cemetery. They're gonna be able to determine when, uh, and how you're able to access the cemetery. So when I, I've, I've been here present in court and I've heard public comment, uh, and there's, there seemed to have been a misunderstanding uh, that this is a public right to twenty-four seven public access, uh, to this land. And, and that's just not true, uh, based on the land's location. This is the statute that controls and that's, uh, how you're able to access it. The land, like I said, has been, has been privately held since the, the late nineteenth century and, and, and always has been, uh, the, the land that the cemetery lies on. And so for the county, uh, we would not be able to, um, we would have no right to, uh, either condemn or through eminent domain, be able to provide any access or take possession of this property. It's a local government code, uh, chapter two sixty-one and, uh, section two sixty-one oh oh one. Uh, the right of eminent domain conferred by this section extends to public or private land, but not to land used for cemetery purposes. So that, that statute, uh, in the local government code is, is, is very clear and very direct that it very specifically mentions this type of land. So I guess to summarize, um, this is not public land. The county does not own it. Access to the land is not unfettered twenty-four seven to the public. It is, uh, access that is controlled, uh, in a reasonable manner by the landowners that you would have to, uh, confer with to be able to, to get access to the land. And that is set by them, not by the government, not by the county. That's set by the, by the private landowners. That's their decision. That's, that's their land.
Excellent. I, I really appreciate that. Sorry, Judge.
No, go ahead. Well, Matt, I, I appreciate your work on, on this. And, um, I think it says it really clearly right there at that first paragraph. The right of access extends only to visitation during the hours determined by the owner or owners of the land. Denton County is not the owner, correct?
That's, that's, that's correct, Judge.
And we do not control, we do not own this land. We do not own this cemetery. And, um, and we've gone above and beyond to maintain it. And so, uh, and we are not, um, we are not the controlling entity over the access to, regardless what the public has been told or, or led to believe, correct?
That's correct, Judge. To, to address that, uh, back in twenty sixteen, when the, when this body decided to, uh, in their discretion, uh, take over maintenance of the property. And there is a, a Health and Safety Code, uh, statute that does allow a county, uh, in its discretion, to be able to maintain, uh, cemeteries that are, uh, over fifty years old and are deemed of historical, uh, significance. And, and this cemetery certainly does qualify. And so at that time, back in twenty sixteen, we did do, uh, a title, a deed search through title resources. And that, that deed search, uh, did show that this, this property, uh, has been, has been privately held and continues to be privately held, the property, uh, where the cemetery lies. Um, and it has been, the, the, the last time that the, that this land was, was transferred, um, was in, in the late, uh, eighteen hundreds, eighteen ninety-one to eighteen ninety-three, uh, when it was deeded. And then maybe when it was recorded, uh, is, is in that timeframe. So the county discretionarily has decided to take over maintenance and has maintained it, uh, since twenty sixteen. And the photographs show the, uh, the condition that the, uh, the cemetery is, is in, Commissioner. But, uh, so that, I think that that title search was done, obviously, to make sure, um, that if the county was gonna do this, that, you know, we were gonna be able to understand and know who did, uh, own the cemetery. So we were, you know, within the, uh, within our rights to be able to, to maintain it. So that's, so the, the fact that the county is maintaining, uh, the cemetery is completely discretionary and is in no way, shape or form, uh, a statement of any sort of ownership by the county. And the same thing with the liaison. The law, uh, is not, does not ask the county to be a liaison between the private landowners, uh, and the citizens who want to visit the, the cemetery. That's another, that would be, that's something that I'd say, that's the county, you know, going, going, going beyond there. There's, there's nothing that says the county has to do that at all, absolutely.
Correct, Judge.
Commissioner Williams.
Yeah, thank you, Matt. Um, I think something that's also, I've heard quite a bit, uh, sitting up here um, is that, uh, the county spends no money, has had, spent no money on this, on this, uh, the efforts whatsoever. And since two thousand sixteen to two thousand twenty-three, so it doesn't include twenty-four, obviously, the county has spent over, and the county being the citizens. This is the citizens' money, not our money up here. This is the citizens' money. A hundred and seven thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars, okay? So those funds of what we've paid out, that has, does not take into account the amount of man-hours of the county employees that aren't paid based on this, which is a considerable amount from Dell and his team that go out there to make sure that things are being done properly. And before, well, a lot of that cleanup was done, when that cleanup was done, there was, you know, tens of multiple yards of, of other items that were cleaned up that was done by the, the facility of, of Denton County. not an outside source that we paid to have that done. So, which, again, is not dollars you don't see on this piece of paper because those are paid through salary and hourly wages of the county. So I think it's imperative for the citizens and everybody to realize, there has been quite a bit of money spent, and effort spent, to make sure that we maintain this cemetery as best possible when, again, the citizens of Denton County don't own it. But I think it's, I think it's our, I believe it's our duty, if you will, to go ahead and help on this situation, and we have. The one other thing I want to point out that I did discuss with the landowners when I visited with them, they have come up with a schedule that of when there will be access to it. And it'll be the first Saturday of every quarter, which would be January, April, July, and October. And the hours for the visitors will be from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. So 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., four times a year, January, the first Saturday of January, April, July, and October. And if there's something special that you need, you can always contact Peggy and her folks. But since this cemetery, we've been involved with it, we've been requested one time by, from what I understand, from an actual individual that has a family member, if you will, that is, that is, that's their resting place. And so, it's not some heavily visited place from the standpoint of visitors coming to pay respects to their family members. You know, when discussing this with the homeowners, you know, I think that we have to all respect their wishes as well. This is their private land. This is where they live. And they have, you know, had individuals go down there that are, and again, not the individuals that come here and speak. I want to make that very clear. They've always been respectful of the landowners' property, as far as I can see and what I understand. But there's others that go down there, and they're not down there for the right intentions. You know, they like to go down there during Halloween, and they like to go down there and drink and leave, you know, beer can stuff. And so, that, we've got to be respectful of those folks. You know, well, I mean, I'll use this for a perfect example, because I've been here long enough. Mr. Huspeth is the one that comes up quite often and is, you know, bringing this to our attention. And I remember when the homeless individuals were living in his backyard, basically. And he would come up here and tell us about how horrible that was. Well, we had no control over that to say, but we did do something to try to help him out, okay? But when it came to his backyard, it was important. Now, if this was his backyard where the cemetery was, he could do what he wanted to. But this is not his backyard. These are citizens, private citizens. And they don't want the same thing he didn't want, people just loitering around, around close to their home. And I think that if you put it in that content, that's being respectful on both sides. So nevertheless, I really appreciate all the efforts that all the people have put into it. I want to make sure I give that. I know that Capricia in my office has spent more hours on this than you can imagine when we have a laundry list of other things that we need to be taken care of in the county as well. I appreciate Peggy and her people's time that met us out there as well, Dell and his people's time, obviously Matt. And I appreciate the judge's time with this as well. He's been involved with it. So at the end of the day, there's been a lot of resources put towards trying to make sure we do the best we can to accommodate everybody's concerns here. And so, Judge, I appreciate the time. I wanted to make sure we did exactly what the individuals asked by putting it on the court for discussion. And thank you so much.
All right, I'd like to ask, thank you, Commissioner. I'd like to ask Peggy Riddle, our Director of the Office of History and Culture, to come forward. I want a couple of questions that I'd like to mention.
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning. Peggy, how many cemeteries do we have in the county?
Okay, I want to clarify that what's on our webpage, the Denton County Historical Commission webpage, is not correct. Yes, Rosalyn. We do not have over 160. We have 127, correct? And of those, nine, eight are identified as African-American cemeteries.
So over 100 cemeteries across this county.
Yes.
How many of those cemeteries does the county pay to maintain?
One. Well, two. We oversee which, the Harrington Clark Cassidy Cemetery, which is an African-American cemetery. The Harrington Cemetery was always there, and the Cassidy and Clark were relocated there after the lake, Lake Lewisville. So that is an African-American cemetery, and the county maintains it through a deed. The property was actually deeded to the county judge in the 1950s. The St. John Cemetery, of course, was always owned by trustees of the St. John Baptist Church that was in Pilot Point.
So the only other cemetery that, so we maintain two. One is the St. John's, which we're voluntarily doing. And the other one is county property. It was deeded to the county judge in the 50s when Lake Lewis was built, correct?
Correct.
And there's over 120 other cemeteries that the county's not maintaining.
Correct. We do have volunteers, however, through our Denton County Historical Commission, as well as volunteers throughout the county that help maintain cemeteries. Through the, right, through cemetery associations. Bobby Mitchell is a cemetery volunteer for the Lewisville Cemetery, the Macedonia, and and the judge, right. And then, we have the, I can't remember, Gary Steele's organization that oversees the
The Veterans Hall of Fame.
The Page Town Cemetery, right.
Yep.
And that's, again, that's a cemetery
Voluntarily, another group voluntarily maintaining cemeteries.
Exactly. And Page Town is an abandoned cemetery, as far as we know.
Correct. Good. All right.
Do you mind if I, I got one thing, real quick.
Absolutely.
So when you guys go and do these cleanups, do you leave the trash there for someone else to pick up? Or do you take it with you?
We actually have got the Jerry Harwell
Republic Services.
Republic Services to come and pick up the trash, yes.
Which is great, which is exactly what we would have tried to do as well, if the time would have allowed. But, okay, thank you.
Exactly.
Members, questions for Peggy and Roz? Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you for your time, ladies.
Thank you.
All right, well, members, are there other questions of the staff? We'll go ahead and hear, there may be some closing comments, but we'll go ahead. There are several people who have registered to speak today. We will go ahead. Ms. Thomas is registered, if needed. And Ms. Bailey has registered, if needed. And then I have, Mr. Huspeth wanted to, he is registered as well. So Mr. Huspeth, did you want to speak? And then Chelsea, I'll get you next. Good evening, good afternoon, good morning.
I stand corrected, Commissioner Williams. The cemetery has been well-maintained. If you call, all the leaves that are out there, a positive thing. There's one headstone that's out there that caught my attention. Mrs. Walker, completely covered. The headstone is completely covered. I hope that is not what you intend to present to us as appropriate. That's a good thing. There's a cemetery on 377 that's very close to St. James Cemetery. Beautifully maintained. Now, what I also heard you say is that you're not responsible for the cemetery. I also heard you say the homeowners have some concerns about the cemetery. And people having access to it. Well, I just want to know, which is it? Is it a public cemetery or a private cemetery? Who owns the cemetery? I ask this question because I know that we've tried for many years to find out from you and your records, the answer to that question, to those, that question now. I have another question I want to ask. In this information sheet that you put out, as far as the Section 711.041, there's a requirement in here that we have to, in writing, notify the homeowners around there and ask their permission. I believe that's what it said.
Yes, sir.
It's a gated community. We can't get to the homes, which is their right, but we can't go up and see those people or talk to them. Now, the Smiths, who is right adjacent to the cemetery, who has been out there with us cleaning up, said, anytime we want to go in that cemetery, we can go through his property. And the others that are there, I've talked, contacted them over the years, and none of them have communicated to me that they don't want us out there. The other thing that you said, Commissioner, is about the bags that are out there.
Ask your question. Go ahead. Your three minutes is up, Mr. Huspeth. I'll go ahead and finish that quick.
Okay. It's just three minutes that I get for
Yes, sir.
Agenda item?
Yes, sir.
The bags that are left out there. When the Commissioner's Court voted to set aside $20,000, one specific provision of that vote is that the trash that we accumulated would be hauled off at the county's expense from that $20,000 in 2016 to pay for that removal of the leaves and the fallen trees. So that is what we understood was going to take place. You indicated that, with some negativity in your comments, that by us cleaning it up and leaving the bags, somehow that was worse than all the leaves that's out there. That you indicated that it was, it's a help. You said you went out there, and you can now say that? That that's, those leaves are a positive thing that's going on, leaving them there? I don't think I would like my loved ones honored in that way. The leaves are covering up headstones. And why can't we have a fence out there that is a little bit more aesthetic than what we have now? Just barbed wire going around the property and falling down posts. And that, it bothers me that you brought my property and the problems I had with the homeless. So I'm standing back there thinking, well, let me see. What did I do that wasn't right? I wasn't proper? I wasn't good for my family? When I said to you, the homeless are using the restroom in the open, number two and number one, right in my backyard, as it were, right across the creek? What is, and somehow you communicated, there's a difference in me looking out or saying anything about St. John's. St. John's was not taken care of at all until I started asking questions about that facility. So I think that's good, that I'm doing that, and I can, I will continue to do that.
Mr. Huspeth, I want to respect everyone's time here. I want to get you an answer. You wrote down your question about who owns, who owns the cemetery. And Mr. Shovelin articulated this morning that it's privately owned. It's not owned by the, it's not owned by the county. It's privately owned.
Well, you're not allowed to say who, who owns it?
We have the, I believe even that all the documents have revealed that. Who owns that? Peggy, do you want to go ahead and address that again?
If I understand it correctly, it would be the descendants of the three, three that are on the original deed. And Kim, do you have those names?
I've got them, Peggy.
Oh, okay.
Yes, so the title search that we did back in 2016 prior to taking over maintenance of the cemetery, the record title appears to vest in John Burden, Joseph Meadows, and Abraham Lyle, trustees, and their successors in office. So it would be those three individuals, and then their progeny.
So Mr. Huspeth, this is not a public cemetery. It's a private cemetery. And the county is, in my opinion, is going above and beyond by maintaining this cemetery. And we don't do that for the Champion Macedonia in Lewisville. We had a, I think you may have been here that morning. We had a very talented young lady from Lewisville, and she's led an effort to, for cleanup days down there, and also to build the fence. And I've been out to that cemetery and cleaned it up myself over the years. And she worked to install that fence. And she didn't come to the Commissioner's Court asking us to build that fence on that private cemetery. She went out and raised the money, and they're continuing to do a great job with that. And so, and building community support. And so, we don't own the cemetery. We are maintaining it. And the only other cemetery we maintain is one that we do own, right, which is that we do own. And just like, you know, both of y'all brought up the homeless situation. I appreciate your sentiments on that, but coming to complain about, to the Commissioners about a homeless situation in the past on city property, not county property, on city property, you know, that might have been misdirected efforts, you know? And I think, I appreciate your passion on this subject and wanting to come talk to us about it. But we don't control the access to this. I was telling Matt yesterday in a briefing how years and years ago, when I was a brand-new county commissioner, I went to a class all about cemeteries, you know, on private land and the complexities that people across Texas face as far as access, you know? And so, it has to be done in a spirit of cooperation, in partnership with the local landowners for reasonable times and reasonable access. And I think that's what, I think we do have that from the neighbors. Commissioner Mitchell wanted to say something.
I was just gonna say, you know, we maintain this one cemetery at our discretion. And I want to know when that all these other cemeteries are gonna come in and say, you maintain one, why not maintain all? And when we did the Champion Macedonia cleanup, we did it as a volunteer group. And Mr. Huspeth, I think it would be beneficial for you and all of us if you would get a group together and let's go out and clean the cemetery, instead of demanding that the county, because we did this at our discretion, and it's not gonna last forever, to let you know that. Because if other cemeteries come in and start asking for us to clean them also and maintain them also, that's gonna start costing money. And so, at some point in time, we're gonna have to say, oh, no, we can't clean all these cemeteries. But we can get volunteers. If you get with some of us and whatever and say, we need volunteers, we'll find some volunteers to help clean that cemetery. And, you know, and help contact the lady. The owners have been, I think, have been gracious in telling us that when you need to clean it, clean the cemetery, let us know. When you need to When you need to get in there, let us know. Let's do it. Let's make this a positive thing. Let's not continue to make something negative because I think we all can help. And I'm willing to help. Just tell me the dates and I'll get my gloves and, of course, they say I don't do much work, but I sure show up. So just, just let us all know and we can get volunteers to help.
I'm very surprised we, we continue to have these conversations about the cemetery when we don't have, we're not the controlling, uh, party over it and we're going above and beyond by maintaining it. I'm, I'm, I'm continuing to be puzzled by that.
Yeah, thank you, Judge. Uh, Mr. Huspeth, um, I, I appreciate your passion and the situation, one hundred and ten percent. I want to clear up a couple of things for you on, on the trash. I, I guess my point to that is, is that definitely the trash bags don't look near as pleasant, as you said, or earlier about the fence itself. Maybe we can make it aesthetically look pleasing, right? The point to that was is, is, and unfortunately, I don't know, the email didn't go directly to you, but, uh, I did email Ms. Stallings because she was the one that was advocating putting this, this, uh, together, this cleanup together, to let her know to please, that first off, the owners didn't want it, second off, at that time, that we were going to try to organize it with yourselves as cleanup date, okay? And with that, then I would have made sure that that was being taken care of. So it, it, you know, it has to be a concerted effort and so, at which you guys had asked and I, I said, hey, yeah, let, let's put something together, but made the decision not to include or wait. And so that, again, that, that's your choice, um, but nevertheless. And I think the other thing is, 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 I'm not saying that the homeless in your situation, I totally get that. I'd be upset too. My point was, is that is your private property and that was what was going on near you and you didn't like it. This is a private, this is private property and to access and get there is driving on and being on and around someone else's home site. And they probably don't want just whoever being up there, hanging around as well.
They have horses.
So, well, they have horses that, that feed. I mean, it's just, it's a very difficult situation. And I think that the county is doing everything they can to work with, um, with individuals and the property owners to make it available and, uh, to continue keeping it cleaned up. I don't expect it to look like a manicured place that is, that you drive by at some of these other cemeteries. You know why? Because people pay for that. Those are privately, th- those are privately owned and they're full profit and people pay to have this hu, this maintenance crew. That's why when you go to, to, uh, cemeteries, you, you don't see hardly any trees, right? And so it can look beautiful all the time. You can see the headstone. That's not what we're dealing with here. We're dealing with the situation that we're going to do the best we can to be respectful of those individuals buried there, which I think i- it, we're doing. It was a, it was a, it's a very, um, it's a wonderful place to go if, to be buried would be there and, or to visit there for a very short period of time. Um, and so, and the other, one other thing, Mr. Smith, I'm not sure who that is, so I'd love to get that information if, if you guys would. I don't know who that, that individual is. We would love to talk with him as well, um, because if he's, you know, willing to give access and I'm not sure where that even is. Yeah, Peggy, do you have?
Mr. Smith has the way in twenty ten.
Okay, so Mr. Smith obviously can't give you much permission at this point.
He's in a better place, huh?
Maybe so, sir.
We sure hope.
I'd like to join him.
Okay, so that's why I don't know who Mr. Smith is. But nevertheless, a, a, again, please realize, I'm not trying to battle with you. I just want a respectful relationship and not coming up every week to continue bowbeating us and saying that, and, and, you know, this is, and I get a chance to talk because I don't say anything. But, uh, you know, you like to accuse us of being, uh, racist and, um, and, and I don't, none of the things that, those things have nothing to do with this. Just because it's an African-American cemetery means, has nothing to do with the decision we make on how we spend the people's money. That's our job.
The homeless situation.
I just want to make sure that, that we're clear on that.
The homeless situation is your property where they were. It's half and half. Half is city, half is county. I talk to the city.
Sure.
And I talk to the county.
And, and it got taken care of, didn't it?
Yes, it did.
Okay. The point to that was, was you didn't like the situation where people were just hanging around your, by your backyard, correct?
Yes.
That is correct.
That's correct.
Neither the, the landowners that own the, the land all around the cemetery, they don't want the same thing.
I stand to.
Is that fair?
Yes.
Yeah. And again, I'm not saying it's homeless people hanging out there. I'm just trying to use that as a core, as a, as a relationship so you can appreciate where they're coming from.
Right.
You know, we have to put ourselves in everybody's shoes. And I put myself in your shoes, Mr. Huspeth, and again, I appreciate your passion. That's why I put, I put all this together. We put a ton of time into it and I wanted to have this meeting so we could have this discussion and finally put it to bed so you could get the questions that you had answered. Doesn't mean you're going to like the answers because you obviously won't, but at the end of the day, I hope that we put this to bed and then we can work together going forward to make sure that both of our needs are met.
I, I do too. And, uh, I'm going to research the, from what I understood with the map that I was given by the historical department showing where the easement was. And for no answers though as to why isn't the easement there again now? It was, it was, it's clear on the map where it was and we should have access. The o- other thing that you mentioned that I need to check on is is it owned by someone that's a private homeowner or just a, an individual or group? I need to find out and check those names to see if that's in fact true.
Well, those are the facts of record. That's the facts of record. So that's what we're talking about today is facts. And I know you don't always like to hear the facts.
No, it's not that I don't like to hear them.
Well, you want it to be.
I want the facts to be facts.
Well, that's what they are.
And not what you're saying.
There's no other place to get. I'm not saying, that's, no, hold on.
Well, what this other individual was saying.
I understand, Mr. Huspeth. That's not what I'm saying. That's what the records show. That, that, I have nothing to do with that. I do the same thing you're talking about. We go look, we find it, but those are the facts and that's what I wanted to.
That's why we had the title company.
That's why we did that.
We spent money with the title.
We spent money for the title company to research this stuff. And again, it goes back to, these are the facts. So, you know, that's the tough part for me is where I get, I will tell you, I do get frustrated because we tell you the facts and you don't like them because they don't fit your narrative, so you continue saying things that, that have, that aren't the truth. And that's what gets frustrating for us up here. If you would just accept the facts and then work with everybody to, to work it to the best of our abilities, that would be wonderful, but that's just not what happens and that's unfortunate.
All right, I want to move on. We have one more speaker on this topic. Mr. Huspeth, I want to echo the comments I made to you publicly and privately when you and I have talked together, met together. We want to keep a dialogue going with you on any of these topics that you have, you know? You have my cell phone, you have my office number. Would love to visit with you. You have any questions about any of this stuff? I will always sit down and meet with you and talk to you, you know, and like we have done in the past. You know, we'll be happy to, to do that. Appreciate your.
And Judge, I'll oblige that as well. Um, could you push the one more slide real quick? I'm sorry, Judge. Because I, I wanted, uh, Mr. Huspeth, I know you're headed back that way, but, um, just so you know, I don't disagree with you. I think there should be a little more aesthetically pleasing look to when you come up for the gates. Uh, I don't know about the fencing to say because that could be very, very expensive, but this is kind of a mock-up that I've asked to be put together and, uh, I'm not sure how we're going to fund it, but I want you to realize that is something that's on, um, on, on my to-do list along, along with Dell's as well. We're going to figure out some way to, to try to make that a little more appealing.
And while we're, thank you, Commissioner. Peggy, would you come up and give a, an update on the designation?
Okay, sir. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Sorry, Judge, I didn't mean to interrupt there.
Speaking of, no.
I forgot that important part.
I want to expound, e- expound on the medallion.
And Hank, yes.
And so I'd like for you to, Peggy, talk about the efforts that the county has gone through to seek historic designation for the cemetery.
Yes. So we, uh, we heard in January of this year that our request, our application for historic Texas Cemetery for Saint John's Cemetery was approved and we received the official notification that's filed with our Denton County Clerk, uh, last week, and that was filed on Friday with our county clerk. So it's all official. It's now connected to any deed search, any title search on the property. If that historic Texas Cemetery designation is always with that, the cemetery. And, uh, we will be able to get a medallion that says Historic Texas Cemetery, and that's what's indicated on these gates. And then we'll have a narrative on the other side about the history of the cemetery.
And that's through the efforts and expense of the county to seek that designation, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Peggy. All right. Next is Ms. Chelsea Stallings.
Good morning.
Good morning, Judge Eads, Commissioners. Uh, my name is Chelsea Stallings. I live in Denton, Texas, seven six two oh one. Um, I have a couple of quick comments and then I'll get to the, the majority of what I'm going to speak about. Um, so first I do want to just extend my thanks and gratitude to this body, very specifically Judge Eads and Commissioner Williams for, uh, putting this on the agenda and having this discussion today. I'm very thankful that we are having this and for the research that you have prepared. You've clearly put your time into this. So I just want to say thank you for that personally.
Thank you.
Um, I also, the second thing I want to address is hearing everything today. There is very, very clearly something about my actions, um, that I need to review. Since I'm limited to three minutes, I'm not going to address that here right now, but, um, I am listening and I am going to be personally reviewing what I need to be doing differently in the future. So I want to let you know that as well.
Thank you, Chelsea.
Um, the, the main thing that I do want to talk about that I am not hearing from everyone, um, it does seem, I, I do want to go back to the land ownership. Um, it does seem that everyone is in consensus on the historical records that, um, the land that was purchased in eighteen ninety-one by three freedmen who were trustees of the cemetery at the time, uh, Joe Metters, John Burton, and Abram Lyles. Um, those designations, you know, we don't consider a trustee. It's going to have a different, um, definition today than it did over a hundred years ago. Um, but it was for their personal ownership as trustees to specifically take care of the property, not to build structures on it like it was designated for that specific use. Um, and, and everyone is correct. Everyone seems correct and in consensus that their descendants are going to be the owners today. Nobody knows who they are. The only things I want to address though is, um, we haven't heard anyone talking about how this, this cemetery became landlocked. And again, that was presented in December, um, in a report. That report has now been verified. It is live on the U N T, uh, University of North Texas digital website, um, that the landlockedness, the inaccessibility of the cemetery occurred in three stages over a fifty period, fifty-year period of time. It began in nineteen eighteen when the tract of land directly north, um, the boundaries were extended, um, by a hundred veras. A vera is a old unit of measurement similar to a yard. It's like a, kind of close to a one to three ratio of feet to yards. It was fraudently inadvertently extended by a hundred veras. And we believe that it was unintentional because the cemetery did remain in active use for the next twenty years. So I don't think that that was intentional at any point. But in nineteen thirty-eight, when the entire property, that northern tract which at this point illegally included the cemetery, when those owners, their land was, uh, forfeited, I believe, for back taxes or something, and the commissioner at the time, uh, for the same spot that you are, his name was Hub Clark, he had to, I guess, put the land up for auction. A private citizen purchased the land, including the cemetery, and then a few months later, Hub Clark turned around and bought the property himself. And this was in nineteen thirty-eight. This coincides with the last known burial in the cemetery. Um, now, I don't know anything about Hub Clark. I don't know his family, his descendants, but it does line up with the fact that the cemetery became landlocked when he accessed this property and he closed it off. When he died in the nineteen sixties and his widow had to take over his affairs, only then were the boundaries of the cemetery corrected, um, to be taken out of his assets. So I just want to make sure that all of that about the landlocked nature of the cemetery did occur over fifty years period of time. Um, it's certainly not, um, you know, any of the private property owners that are there today. It's certainly not anyone's fault. We're not laying the blame like that, but that is important to know for the historical record that it did become landlocked through a series of inadvertent, you know, I don't know what the word is, flipping letters around on deed records. Um, so that is important to understand as well. But I, again, in conclusion, thank you again for your time, for your discussion today. And, uh, again, I will be reviewing my personal actions, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Stallings. All right. Any other comments from members of the court? All right, hearing none. There is no action on this item. This was a briefing. This was a briefing. Thank you, Commissioner.
Yes, thank you, Judge.
To the staff, for everyone, to our efforts on this.
And I appreciate everybody being involved and Mr. Huspeth and Ms. Stallings for coming today. I appreciate it.
Thank you. And my offer still stands. I'll be happy to meet and visit with you all.
I'm right there with you, Judge.
Let's go, I think we're going to go back to, I'll try to get everybody with our guests here out of, out of the way. Let's go to item two, our consent agenda members. Are there any items on the consent agenda you'd like to pull today or do we have a motion for approval as presented? Motion by Commissioner Mitchell?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Our consent agenda today consists of item two A, approve of the order-making appointments. Item two B is approval of the interdepartmental transfers. Item two C is approval of payroll. Item two D is approval of budgeting request one zero one zero five zero for the AgriLife Extension Department to transfer four thousand dollars from training and education to administrative supplies for purchases related to the relocation of the office in January twenty twenty-four. All right, and we've done all of item three. Let's go to item five, which is approval of bill report payments from C S C D Community Corrections, T A I P Sheriff's Training, Sheriff's Forfeiture, V I T Interest and DA Forfeiture Funds are presented for recording purposes only. Mr. May?
Thank you, Judge. I have no chances today. Recommend approval as presented.
All right, we have a motion for approval. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell. Second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six A, approval of specifications authorized for R I P two four two eight zero two, classification, compensation, study, and performance management. An appointment of evaluation committed to include Ryan Williams, County Commissioner Precinct One, Tony Luton, uh, Assistant Director of Human Resources, uh, and Crystal Amex, Human Resources Manager. We have a motion by Commissioner Mitchell. Second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six B, approval of renewal of the Simsera GPS and camera system from Simsera Incorporated, an amount of sixty-five thousand nine hundred and ten dollars through the Sourcewell Cooperative Contract zero two zero two two one, S A M. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six C, approval of renewal of R I P two 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 six nine two, Medical Laboratory Human Resources, Topical Health Technologies Incorporated.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer. Second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six D, approval of purchase of thirty-six Panasonic ToughBooks, docks, tablets, and public sector service packages for the completion of the fiscal year twenty four hardware refresh project from Rugged Solutions America LLC, D B A Mobile Concepts Technology, a reseller of Panasonic Corporation of America, of North America, in a amount of a hundred and eighty thousand five hundred and forty dollars through the Texas Department of Information Resources, D I R Cooperative Contract, D I R C P O five two two five.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams. Second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six E, approval, approval to dispose of abandoned inmate property in compliance with Chapter two sixty-three one fifty-two A three of the Local Government Code for disposition of surplus in Texas Code of Criminal Procedures eighteen point seventeen.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams. Second by Commissioner Mc, uh, Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six F, approval to declare existing furniture as surplus and donate the items to the Denton County Master Garden Association in the Amfork Chapter of the Texas Master Naturalists Incorporated. The chair move for approval? Second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item seven A, approval of budgeting request one zero one zero six zero for the in amount of $29,309 for the fiscal year 2024 Cities Readiness Initiative Grant and any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell. Second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item seven B, approval of budgeting request 101070 for the Fire Marshal's Office to transfer $29,514 from the Fire Code Enforcement and $17,043 from non-departmental unappropriated contingency to fire and ambulance services for a total transfer of $46,557. Funds are needed to cover the cost of a part-time senior management analyst position and any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson. The Chair, oh, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item seven C, approval of budgeting request 101090 for post-adjudication to transfer $11,000 from local youth services unappropriated contingency to the local post-adjudication capital equipment to fund the purchase of a replacement commercial-grade dishwasher.
Bill move.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell. Second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item eight A, a report from Human Resources regarding hiring actions of elected officials. This is presented for recording purposes only. Mr. Hernandez.
Judge, Commissioners, good morning. We have one promotion in the county clerk, one new hire in adult probation, one demotion in the district attorney's office, one new hire in JP number two, one new hire in UNAD probation, one new hire in the sheriff's office, that is, at attention, Officer One, one new hire in the tax office, and three promotions in the tax office. That's it for this week.
Perfect. I'll remind the public that that is presented for recording purposes only. Next is item eight B, approval of the creation of a part-time senior manner, manager, management analyst, pay grade 13 for the Fire Marshal's Office. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson. Second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is eight C, approval of the creation, creation of a temporary financial support specialist, one, pay grade five for the County Treasurers Office. Chair move for approval?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Falconer, I mean, uh, Williams. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Cindy, for being here. Next is item 10A, approval of the Tabor Ranch Commercial Final Platte. This is Lot 1, Block 1 and Lot 1, Block 2. This is 18.643 acres located in Commissioner Precinct 4. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson. Second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 13A, approval of the United Way of Denton County Incorporated funding request to fulfill the allocation of American Rescue Plan for housing assistance, nonprofit assistance, and food assistance due to COVID-19 and any appropriate action.
Bill move, approve.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell. Second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, we did that. We did all that. Next is 14A, approval of the 2023-2024 interlocal cooperation agreement to ICA for library services between Denton County, Texas and the town of Ponder, the Betty Foster Public Library. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson. Second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 14B, approval of the 2023-2024 interlocal cooperation agreements for fire protection services between Denton County, Texas and the City of Aubrey Fire Department, the City of Frisco Fire Department and any appropriate action.
Bill move, approve.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item 14C, approval of the 2023-2024 interlocal cooperation agreements for ambulance service between Denton County, Texas and the City of Aubrey Ambulance Services, the City of Denton Ambulance Service, and the City of Frisco Ambulance Services.
Bill move, approve.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer. Second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 14D, approval of amendments number two to agree between, uh, the county and engineered 2022 Drainage and Structure Project, RFQ 01182451, between Denton County, Texas and Hafit Associates Incorporated in a not-to-exceed amount of $7 million with funding to come from the Transportation Engineering Professional Services. Order line item 2053018570 is recommended by the Denton County, County Purchasing Director. Chair move for approval? Second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 14E, approval of agreement for construction services, the Charlie Cole Chiller Replacement, RFP 232787, between DMI Corporation. This is Decker Mechanical in Denton County, Texas, in the amount of $2,176,183, inclusive of a contingency allowance and the amount of $150,000 with funding to come from the 2012 PI bond funds. Order line on 661093 is recommended by the Denton County Purchasing Director.
Bill move, approve.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer. Second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 14F, approval of the third renewal of the Transportation Strategic Planning, Funding, and Project Management Professional Services Contract between Denton County, Texas and Innovative Transportation Solutions, ITF, in the amount of $584,700 per year with funding the amount of $584,700 to come from non-departmental transportation consultant order line item 0174221040 as recommended by the Denton County, County Purchasing Director.
Move, approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams. Second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 14G, approval of temporary workspace and access easement agreement between ONIC NLG Pipeline LLC and Denton County, Texas whereby Denton County will allow ONIC to have temporary use of an area. This is 2.85 acres as a temporary workspace to conduct work in an easement area and to access upon, perform permitted work in the easement area, which will expire 10 months after the date of the agreement, after which ONIC will restore the easement area and the temporary workspace and the access area together with a TWNA area to access the easement area and work and perform the permitted work on a portion of the 106.684 acres fronting the south side of Milam Road and the east side of I-35 located in the J-Airs Survey Abstract to Denton County, Texas.
Bill move, approve.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer. Second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 14H, approval amendment number one to the interlocal cooperation agreement between Denton County, Texas and the town of Flower Mount, Texas for the construction of the Denton Creek Boulevard Bridge of the Grand Branch with Denton County agreeing to increase its contribution towards satisfactory completion of the project from $1 million to an amount not to exceed $6 million with funding in an amount of $5 million to come from the Denton Creek Bridge, Boulevard Bridge, Precinct 4, Trip 22. This is order line on 8975769030 and any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson. The Chair will second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 14I, approval of interlocal cooperation agreement between Denton County, Texas and the town of Flower Mount, Texas with a purpose of providing engineering, right-of-way acquisition, utility, relocations, inspections, and construction of Lakeside Parkway as a six-lane divided arterial. This is for, between FM 2499 and 121 located in the town of Flower Mount with the county agreeing to contribute $4 million, $270,000 towards satisfactory completion of the project with funding the amount of $4,270,000 to come from Lakeside Parkway Project Precinct 3. This is Trip 22. Order line on 8975699030.
Bill move.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell. Second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Boy, those last two items, those are big areas that are growing down there. So this is, these are, it's going to welcome that new growth. Got other areas growing as well. So let's go to, I think we got, did we get everything? Bianca, okay. So let's go to item 17, which is community updates. Do we have any updates for Bubus? Cemetery updates, Commissioner?
No, no, no more cemetery updates today. Thank you again for all that. I really appreciate it. Um, I have one thing out of Precinct One. Uh, it's pretty, pretty interesting. So downtown Prosper Logo Competition. So calling all high school students, grades nine to 12, private, public, or homeschooled. The downtown Prosper Logo Competition, ending Friday, April 12th, is a chance to showcase your creativity. Create a logo that captures the essence of the town of Prosper and submit it through the website. So more of it, more can be found on prospertx.gov. And that's it, Judge.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Falconer.
Thank you, Judge. So we've got a few things going on as we approach Easter especially. So in the Colony, there's a spring extravaganza, and that is, uh, March 28th at 5:00 at the Five Star Complex. They continue to have their income tax preparation at the Colony Library. Um, so you can still go for that as well. And then in Frisco, they're having their Easter extravaganza at the PGA Frisco, and that's, um, March 30th at 10:00 a.m. And that is, uh, at the PGA.
In Denton County.
In Denton County, yes, sir. Yes. And, um, then in Carrollton, um, tomorrow, uh, the 27th at 6:00 is the Citizens Evening and the State of the City.